Call this meeting to order, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
Mr. Penya. Graziano.
Here.
Natari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Mr. Loubert.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
Summation.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the December 19th edition of the Star Ledger and Bellville Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellville Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file in municipal clerk's office.
Let your leg go. We have several presentations on the agenda tonight, and then we're going to go through discussions. The first presentation is a presentation of the Carnegie Medal to Mr. Michael Benjamin James. So I'm going to call Mr. James forward. So for those of you who don't know, there was a time period about, how long ago was that? What did you say, four? Almost a year ago, where Belleville was really in the statewide, if not national, spotlight for the heroic efforts of this young man. For those of you who don't remember, there was an incident that happened right off Route 21 or on the 21 that went, a car ended up in the Passaic River. And Michael happened to be on the scene. Michael's past training and instincts kicked in, and this young man, who is Belleville resident, and we're proud to have as one of our residents, without thought for his own safety, without fear, got out of his car, jumped into the Passaic River, and assisted in saving the lives of somebody else. And that's... While he received a lot of recognition at the time, his heroic efforts were picked up by the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission. So this is a commission established by Andrew Carnegie himself in 1904, where he put forth an endowment that would then honor what would be called heroes in the community. They had several, I've done some research in reading about this, and they have several levels of awards that they hand out. This one falls in the third category, and this is Andrew Carnegie's words, his direct words, as he set up this endowment to the commission. It says, "A medal shall be given to the hero, widow, or next of kin which shall recite the heroic deed that it commemorates." So this medal that we're going to hand out actually is marked with the heroic effort. And I asked Mike before whether he's seen, he has not seen the medal yet. And this is probably the first time in Belleville's history that we are receiving a medal and having the honor to award that medal. Again, we have connection to the Carnegie's, our library was founded initially with the Carnegie Fund, but, so it says that "The medal shall recite the heroic deed it commemorates that descendants may know and be proud of that accomplishment. The medal shall be given for the heroic act even if the doer be uninjured." And I remember that day, I remember waking up, the chief was telling me that there was an accident, and then hearing immediately news reports that one of our residents jumped into action. I know your training came into play, and you were able to assist in saving the life that day. And it was just great that you were there, it was great that our fire and our police responded, and everybody got out of there safe. So on behalf of the entire township, and especially the Carnegie Foundation, I thank you for this. I formally want to present this to you. It comes in a box, it's labeled Carnegie Medal. That's on the back of the medal, it's actually engraved what the heroic act was. So it's an honor for me, the Carnegie Foundation allows me as mayor to present it, and it's an honor for me, and on behalf of the township, we all owe you a debt of gratitude. That was a really nice, does council want to make any, anybody want to add a comment to?
Good, Mike. Great job. Thank you, God bless you, you're safe, everything's cool. That's such a gorgeous medal.
It is.
And the first time, so that's a great, it's a great honor for us as well.
Thanks. So we're going to move on, we have another presentation. This is Presentation B, the presentation, a presentation to Mr. Luigi Fruncello, a Belleville firefighter for saving a man's life. This is a day that we honor heroes for power. I remember hearing this from, I got a letter from your mayor, I guess, where we live, and telling me about this, I remember discussing it with your chief, and I know one thing, how uncomfortable you feel right now, because this man does not like attention, everybody. But this is an act that warrants it, and again, it's an honor for me to be able to stand here, have you as one of our firemen, have another mayor contact me, tell me about the heroic act. We have a resolution that will be passed tonight by, on the municipal council, so I'm just going to read that resolution now. Whereas on the morning of Friday, January 24th, Lou Fruncello, on his day off, ran to the scene of a vehicle accident in his neighborhood. And whereas the vehicle was on fire, and the driver of the vehicle was still at the wheel. And whereas, without hesitation, Lou opened the door, rescued the driver from the burning vehicle, and pulled him away from the accident area. And whereas thereafter, Lou returned to the vehicle to ascertain whether any other documents were in the backseat. And whereas, finding no one else in the vehicle, Lou returned to the driver to find he had gone into cardiac arrest. Whereas, Lou began administering CPR until Hawthorne EMS, fire, and police arrived on the scene. And whereas, because Lou's courageous and selfless actions, the driver is alive today. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor, municipal council, the township of Belleville hereby commend Belleville firefighter Lou Fruncello for his express and admittance, and admiration for Lou and his actions on January 24th, 2020, which undoubtedly saved a man's life on that day. Congratulations, Lou Fruncello from Silver Lake. Councilmembers, any other comments? So, so next up, we have Item C, which is a presentation, we're going to hit the pause button on that one for just a minute, because we're still waiting on some of the honorees to arrive. Unless they're here yet? No?
All right, are they all here?
They're waiting for one.
One more? Okay.
We're going to come back to that one. So we're going to go forward with discussions. We've added Item Number C, which is going to be something that was originally in executive session. That's now going to be Item C, that's no longer something for executive session. But we're going to start with, we're going to receive a representative from the New Jersey Census. And we have with us, Ms. Regina. Just have you come forward. The only thing I'm going to ask you is that since we are live streaming, and unfortunately there's no microphone there, just speak up and project as loud as possible. But I'll give a quick little overview, we invited Ms. Regina here. We're obviously going to be counting the census, it's something that I've talked about now for about a year, that Belleville will count, and we're going to count, there's no doubt about that. This coming Sunday at 12 noon, it's on our website, it's on our social media channels, we are holding a kickoff campaign, which is something that we have to do to participate. And Ms. Regina's here, she's going to give us a kind of a brief overview of the program and what we could all expect. So just speak up again.
Okay, do you want me to stand here?
Yeah, you kind of got to, I would face us.
Face you?
But let them.
Just yell.
Angle, I would angle. You're good. You're fine.
First of all, thank you so much. Mayor Melham, I'm delighted and honored to be present here this evening. My name is Regina Waynes Joseph, and I am a partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau. And I am, my territory is Essex County, so I'm thrilled to be here in Belleville, New Jersey. I've been working with the council and the mayor's deputy, Jacqueline Guaman, who is chairing a complete count committee to get all of the community engaged. Now this is the bottom line, in 16 days, for 95% of America, Census 2020 is starting. On March 12th, letters are going to be going out to 95% of the residents of the United States of America. So you will start to receive these mailings, which will tell you how you can respond to the census. And amazingly, the 2020 census, for the first time, gives you four ways to respond. Online, paper, by phone, and only if you didn't self-respond by phone, internet, or by paper, will a census taker come knocking on your door. So if you don't want a census taker to come knocking on your door, when you get the letter from the census saying it's time to respond, then either pick up the phone, go online, or fill out the paper questionnaire. Now, you should be aware as well, that the census understands that we're a multilingual society, and we love it. So consequently, 12 non-English languages will be available for residents to respond online and phone. That's not bad. I mean, 12 non-English languages, come on. All right, in addition, 59 non-English language guides will be available in video and print. In other words, if you want, if you want help trying to figure out what to do or whatever, we've got an additional 59 English, 59 languages that are non-English in video and print format so that you can get some education about it, including American Sign Language, Braille, and large print. Now, I have presented council members with packets of materials, and in addition, Ms. Guaman, that's right, and Ms. Guaman was kind enough to put on your desk there, okay, so somebody's pulling somebody. A "Shape Your Future." So I'm going to move over to the "Shape Your Future" now, quickly, because I want, because it's important now. Everybody knows that the census is once every 10 years, and it's been once every 10 years since 1790. And it is mandated by Article 1, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution. So it's been done, whether it was done by pony back in 1790, or whatever, it's been done. And so now here we are in 2020, and we've got to, and understand that this decennial census, all we want to do is find out who the population is. In other words, we want to count it. That's all we want to do, is count the population. Everything is confidential. I know there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, various communities fearful about responding to the census. Nobody gets the information. This is what Director Dillingham in Washington, DC said, and I've taken what he said, you know, I watched these fan, and I said, oh, I like that. He said, "The census is a one-way street. Everything comes in and nothing goes out." And courts have upheld that decision, the confidentiality of the census information by federal law, and if there's a violation, then it is subject to five years in federal prison and/or a $250,000 fine. Trust me when I tell you, I am not going to federal prison to share your information. It's as simple as that. And before I was hired, I had to take an oath of confidentiality, not until I no longer have the job, but for life. In other words, when my daughter puts me in the ground, any information goes with me. It's all confidential. So this is what you have to stress to communities. There's no law enforcement, no ICE, no DHS, no any other initials or whatever, nobody gets the information. So please stress that the information is confidential. Now, now, council people, quickly to go through this, all right, I want you, this is the latest, this is the latest info, all right, the survey awareness. Listen, everybody, there's a lot of rumors and fraudulent stuff going on. This weekend, I'm sure that some of you saw on the news that sadly, apparently, you know, a particular political party was sending out letters saying census to confuse residents, all right? That's, so we have to be on the ball, all right? We have a rumor hotline kind of website for all these kinds of things, all right? And what I want to stress to everybody is that the website, everybody can go on, is 2020census.gov, all right? Everybody can go on there and get information, pamphlets, brochures, flyers, printout, gift to your churches, everything, all right? So be aware of fraudulent scams. The Census Bureau is not going to ask you to give any money, or your credit card information, or anything like that, all right? Moving on to the next page, how you will be invited to participate. As I said, starting March 12th, council people, an invitation to respond online will be mailed to every household. Some households will also receive paper questionnaires. If you don't answer, we'll send you a reminder letter on March 16th. If you haven't responded yet, we're going to send you a postcard on March 26th. If you still haven't responded, on April 8th, we're going to send you a reminder letter and a paper questionnaire, and then a final reminder postcard on April 20th, before we follow up in person, all right? So that's the schedule. Mayor and council, there's a mail contact strategy viewer, a strategies viewer, you can go online and see which of your residents in your community, and by that I mean neighborhoods, will be receiving just English questionnaires or bilingual questionnaires.
Can you briefly explain, if you know any of the details about this Sunday's outreach program? The outreach program that we're doing on Sunday?
Oh, I can tell you what I've been told, I was just invited by Jacqueline. As I understand it, the township of Belleville is having a census kickoff event on Sunday, March 1, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. at the Senior Center at 8 Franklin Avenue in Belleville, which is cosponsored by the mayor, the town, and the town council, and Clarion Madison Medical Center. And so there'll be, you know, free blood pressure and glucose, face painting for the kids, light refreshments, learn about the importance of the census, and job opportunities. And mayor, council, and residents, this is what I need to tell you, we have thousands of available jobs right now for local residents, and we need you to apply. You have to apply online by going to 2020census.gov/jobs. You have to apply online. Pay rates are according to where you live. You live in Essex County, the pay rate for a census taker is $21 an hour, which I don't think is too bad, okay? And they're flexible. In, in other words, they're flexible hours, if you want a second job, if you're a retiree, if you're a student, you only have, it takes 10 to 15 minutes to apply, and you got to apply. We need help. We are trying to give away these jobs, I mean, you know. But you've got to be 18 years of age or older, have a social security number, and be a citizen. Mayor, if you turn to the next, you'll see Census Questionnaire Assistance, and what we are trying to do is ask our partners, such as the township of Belleville, to hold events where perhaps some residents of the community, like senior citizens or others, may want to go and get assistance in responding to the census, okay? So we need you to get your partners to provide mobile devices, and dependent on the area that it is, if it has a history of a low response score, then census employees will come and assist people.
I think we're doing that at our library.
That's wonderful, that's what we need. It also, council people, you'll see information about our field operations, we've received a lot of questions about, well, do you count the homeless? What about the people in the hospitals? We count everybody. When I tell you, these people are some sophisticated people, well, they've been doing it since 1790, so they have a little experience. So in other words, the homeless count is conducted by a special team that will be going out the night of March 30th, the night of March 31, and the morning of April 1, across the country, and they will be going underneath the bridges, or on the park benches, or wherever, to count the homeless. And this is why we need the community to give us the information. Sure, we have some of the information, we've got a lot of the information, but there may be no information. So we need, if you know about where the homeless, I know that there's three men who sleep in the park, you know, on this side of the building, whatever, let us know. We need to, that is, we need to know that information. So, and we also, what we call group quarters, college dormitories, hospitals, hotels, senior residences, this kind of thing. We count everybody, all right?
I think that's part of what we did by organizing a team here, that we're going to make sure that we could assist in the campus and getting to where else, and organizing that effort at the library.
That, I mean, that would just be absolutely wonderful.
I do need you to wrap up though.
And that's it. And so, and so, and so, the bottom line is, my last, my last words are, Statistics in School Week is March 2 to 6, that's next week. I already met with, I've met the president of the Board of Education. Self-response, I already told you, begins March 12. Response rates go live on March 20. Mayor, council, you can go on a map, starting March 20, and find out if your community is responding. You'll want to know that. And Worship Weekend with your faith-based organizations is March 27 to 29. So that's it, people. If you want to be counted, if you want to have proper representation, if you want to make sure that your community gets the funding that it needs, then you need to respond to the census. And the mayor had no problem with me speaking up.
I did not. Yes, very welcome to the show. So Regina, we can't have a conversation, but what I'll do is Regina, any questions, issues, concerns, we have our event on Sunday, but if, on Sunday, but if you want to stick around a few minutes maybe outside, if anybody has specific questions, you can go outside and ask those questions.
Good.
Thank you, Regina.
Thank you so much.
Very loud presentation, perfect. It was perfect.
Regina's a... Oh, thanks.
Okay, so the next slide up, we have is Discussion Number V. It is received, Passaic Valley Sewage Commission to discuss connection fees. Gentlemen, I'm not sure if you're going to all come up, or just one. I don't know if we need everybody, whoever you decide, come on up. So we asked Passaic Valley to come on in tonight to discuss a fee that we sometimes get some questions about, we get some complaints about, because people just don't understand it. So that would be the sewer connection fee that either new builders, whether you're building a single house, residential house, or developer, or if you're just remodeling your house. This is a fee that sometimes our construction code department has to assess, and I've historically had some questions that are not secret, and I know other municipalities have had some questions. First of all, gentlemen, thank you for being here, I know you probably want to be anywhere else at 6:30 on a Tuesday than waiting for us, but I thank you for being here. We had a pre-meeting, so a lot of, a lot of this was kind of hashed out a little bit, so we're just going to do maybe a summary for five or 10 minutes or so about the program, so my questions and your answers, and then we're good to go. So if you want to just give a, I'm just going to ask you to speak up and for Jacqueline.
Yes, sir.
I'll go with that Sam Daffy level with the chief.
Yes, she'd be tough to tough though, I have to say.
We might need her as our mouthpiece, sir. But yeah, just speak up, so if you just want to give an overview real quick of what the sewer connection fee is?
I will.
We'll just...
Yes, sir. So my name's Greg Chiamantozzi, I'm the executive director of the agency. With me is Andy Calzigerone, he is the deputy director of our Inspection and Compliance Bureau. We do appreciate the opportunity to come in, because there's some confusion about the basis for connection fees, how PBSC's connection fees are calculated, rightly so, the mayor, and I understand the council members, have some questions for how this all comes about. Why are people paying connection fees? You used the example earlier during a pre-meeting of a one-bedroom house where they're adding a bedroom. Why would there be a connection fee under those circumstances? So by way of very brief background, there are two laws that were enacted in this state back in the 1990s that provide the legal basis in New Jersey at least for connection fees, the imposition of connection fees. Those are the Sewerage Authorities Law and the Municipal and County Utilities Authorities Law. PBSC is a statutory state agency, we have our own statute, but our connection fees are based in large part on those two laws that I just cited for the mayor and council, and obviously for the benefit of your citizens that are here with us today. And essentially, the basis for a connection fee is that the law recognized that there might be a, if not a need, certainly an effort and intent to collect, and when there's a new user in your sewer system, to connect that new user's share toward the capital investment that's been laid out by the facility since the dawn of that facility's existence. In PBSC's case, we were founded by our state legislature in 1902. The total investment in our plant over the last 118 years exceeds $1 billion. It's a fairly substantial amount of money that's been invested all the time. Sewerage authorities like PBSC, we're one of the oldest in the country, we're the fifth largest, remarkably capital-intensive undertakings. So in 19, in the 1990s, these laws were passed, PBSC enacted its connection fee for the first time in 1998. And when asked to explain why a connection fee is imposed, Mr. Mayor, I shared during our pre-meeting an example that somebody from the EPA, much smarter, much wiser than I, had laid out at a seminar that I attended, and they said, basically, they use the example of two coworkers that, let's say they live 100 miles from where they work, or 50 miles from where they work, let's say. We have a lot of employees at PBSC that live at the Jersey Shore area, or up in Sussex County, so in this example, two coworkers, they live 50 miles from work, either of them has a, has a vehicle at the time, they decide that they want to go in and havese, so to speak, and purchase a used car for, let's say, $12,000. Maybe a year later, another coworker from the same town says, hey, two of you have that car, seems to be working out very nicely for the two of you, I'd like in. And they said, well, that'd be fine, no problem. He says, well, you guys already bought the car, I'll just pay for gas, and we'll call it even. And in this example that this EPA representative used, they said, as I would say, not so fast, I put $6,000 in last year, this guy put $6,000 in last year, maybe we're not going to take $4,000 from you, so that we're equally in for $4,000, $4,000, $4,000, there's been some depreciation, the car was a little bit of a junker to start with, but we'll do a calculation and maybe pay us $3,500, whatever the case may be. That's basically the theory. I like the analogy, the mayor and council may not, but it's an analogy that makes some sense to me. Yeah, we did. We did. So, so that's basically the basis for connection fees. Connection fees, to my knowledge, are charged by every large wastewater treatment plant in the state of New Jersey and beyond. I understand that there are a little bit of inconvenience, the mayor's concern is with... The mayor's concern is with respect to surprise, particularly to residential users of our system that may be all of a sudden, you know, hit with a...
Yeah, I think that's kinda where this all started, to say the least. So for those of you who are listening to this conversation and counsel that that's here, the implication, when I hear that I have to pay a sewer connection fee, I'm assuming that I'm paying to connect to a sewer. And that's really not the case at all. So you could be the owner of a single-family house and put an addition on your house of a bedroom, not a bathroom, and have to pay a sewer connection fee. And the residents are very confused by that, because they're already connected to a sewer. There are no more people living in the house. Why do I have to pay an application fee? Why do I have to pay, I think it was a processing fee or administration fee? So they don't really understand why that's the case, nor do I. And the other issue has been that, and for those of you who don't know, so Belleville was historically a, well, we, I would consider a founding member or partner. We contributed funds, along with many other municipalities, to start the State Valley. So in essence, the communities that paid for the Safe Valley early on are the owners, because, in my opinion, you might disagree with it, because we funded it to begin with.
I promise not to interrupt you again. The one thing that didn't come up during our pre-meeting that I'd point out, we had a handful of initial owners that paid the initial capital investment. The only thing I'd point out to the mayor and to the council is every municipality that's come on board since then has paid a connection fee. So for instance, I think the most recent, I think North Bergen's probably the most recent, yeah. So North Bergen is probably the most recent contributing municipality to PBSC. They paid a substantial connection fee in the millions of dollars in the city. Correct. So all 48 towns have made an initial capital investment into the system, and to the extent that we had any additional municipalities, they pay a connection fee under our rules and regulations.
And I would argue that, as we said, as I said in the meeting, if you can tell me, and again, for the benefit of those who don't know this or haven't been through the process, when you submit a permit in Belleville, in any municipality, but Belleville specifically, a representative of the Safe Valley comes, reviews those permits, reviews those plans, and then makes the determination on whether or not they're gonna assess a fee. And that could be, I'm remodeling my house, I'm adding a bedroom. That could be, I'm gonna build a new building, I'm gonna build a two-family house. And that's then assessed. And the unsuspecting homeowner or developer or builder might not realize that those permits may not be issued until that time is paid, and/or CO will not be issued until we pay that fee. And again, nobody, you know, the sewer connection fee, people think that you're digging up the ground, or somebody's digging up the ground, you're actually paying to connect. That's not the case. And that's where I kinda have a problem with it, because if you were to tell me that our capacity is X, and when we built the Safe Valley, the capacity was X, and over a decade or two decades more volume is coming in, therefore we have to plan for the future, and this sewer connection fee is almost like a future impact fee that was then put into a line item for future upgrades, I can kinda swallow that a little bit, but it's really not. That sewer connection fee is really not going to future upgrades.
I agree. No, there's no question about it. The connection fee is not a term that we coined. It's in the laws that I cited for the mayor and council earlier. Some other agencies might refer to it as a tapping fee. A number of our municipalities, I think Belleville's one of them actually, has its own connection fee that they charge under the same circumstances. So whatever the basis there might be, as I mentioned in our pre-meeting, we're proud of it when we do a review of the connection fees charged across the state of New Jersey. And again, we're the largest, so sometimes we benefit from economies of scale. But our connection fee to a resident of Belleville, to a developer that's connected, and we wanna encourage, the last thing we wanna do is stifle development in our communities. But our fees are among the lowest in the entire state. You know, we looked at 16, luckily on treatment works like PBSC, I think we were the 14th highest of the 16.
And I just think it's education. I don't think that people understand it. The article that I was talking about in our pre-meeting was an article out of Lynnhurst from some years ago. The headline was "Sewer Connection Fee Sting." And in that article, there was a spokesperson for, I don't know if he's still with the agency, it was there, in Barozia.
Gabriel Barozia was counsel to the agency. He's actually best of us.
Oh, okay. So when he explained it, he basically said that the municipalities have invested a large sum of money, which we have, in the construction and maintenance of the wastewater treatment system. The Safe Valley has implemented a fee connection program to ensure all connections are made properly and to protect the integrity of the system. I just don't think if I'm adding a bedroom to my house, any of that money is going to make sure that the connection, which doesn't exist, because I'm not connecting to a sewer, nor am I adding a bathroom. But I just don't follow that logic, and it's hard, as you know, it's hard for, we've already made that point, it's just hard for us to understand why a single-family house has to spend $800, $900 and have their permits held up for a sewer connection fee when they're not connected to any sewer. I err on the side of user fees. You use water here in Belleville, we charge you for your water. Now we charge you for proportional of that sewer, because it's connected to your water. So, and you made the argument in our meeting that, well, it offsets the future cost of the user fee. And I made the argument, I'd rather the users just pay the fee. So they don't expect to necessarily pay $20,000, $30,000 if it's a sensitive developer, or just the $700, $800 for a residential homeowner. And I know you like to say, and you've said that it's mandated, you know, the state gives you that permission, I accept that. The state gives us permission to pass a law to charge people. We can pass, Belleville does not have a recreation charge right now, as I said in our meeting. We have the authority to pass one. We have. So you have that discretion to say yes or no. And it wasn't since, what, 1904, 1908 it was founded? This fee only happened in 1980 or '90.
'98.
So somebody in the Safe Valley sat around a room in 1980, not in '98, and said, aha, we can get away with this, in my opinion. And therefore, it's perpetuated since then. That's obviously, you know, my opinion.
I know your opinion. I respect your opinion. We actually appreciate the opportunity to come in here and answer your questions. But one point I'd make in response to that is, again, we're a state agency. We operate for no profit. So it's not, you know, that money's not going to the bottom line to pay higher salaries or anything like that. Our budget, our spending plan is what it is. We do have some other large revenues outside of the municipal user charges, and I don't know the town's population, but I know it exceeds 50,000, whatever the number is.
36, 38.
I apologize, I thought it was over 40. I'm sorry. So we have 1.5 million residents. Our users pay among the lowest user charges in the United States. The average household in the United States pays about $501 per year for sewer use charges. Our average household pays less than $20, $50.
And everybody's assessed their fee. So if we have a development that comes in with 20 units or 30 units, obviously, there's gonna be more flow going to the Safe Valley. Belleville is charged for that flow. And then we pass that through to the owner. So they, it's not like you're eating anything at that point, you're, but what, explain the difference between contracted municipalities, which Belleville is, and other, and a...
Leasing municipalities, probably, yeah, sure. So, so...
Owner, rent, you're either an owner or a customer. And there's no flow price difference?
No, so your point from earlier, Mr. Mayor, Belleville's one of our original municipalities. There's an initial contract from 1902. There's a few other contracts during the few years after that. Belleville, Newark, you know, our biggies from day one. And then we've had a number of municipalities that have added over the years. We started with, I don't know, maybe 15 municipalities. We now have 48. Is that number way off? Forgive me if I overlook. I know we have 48 now. What do we start with?
How many owners? I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, so we have expanded. So most of you guys are on these municipalities. But to answer the question you just asked, Mr. Mayor, no town has any benefit from being an original versus a new guy in the block, so to speak. What happens is when we work up our budget, our spending plan for the following year, we back out what we project to be our revenues for that year. And obviously, we wanna minimize the municipal user charges that are borne by our 1.5 million taxpayers in communities like Belleville and maximize the other revenue sources. The largest of those revenue sources are Liquid Waste Acceptance Program, something we're very proud of, and won a number of awards for this program. That's a $33.5 million revenue source that only seven years ago, in 2012, was a $16.4 million revenue source. That allows us to keep the municipal user charges down to, again, less than $250 per household. You know, we know each other's positions. I understand the mayor's concerns 1,000%. We wanna work with the town. We certainly don't want there to be any surprise. Mayor had mentioned that perhaps permits might be held up. Permits don't get held up. A CO might get held up, a final CO. But we don't wanna stifle development, so we're not gonna hold up on permits. We want development to take place. We wanna get out in front of it. Once we have an application, we'll work with the developer. In our pre-meeting, we talked about the one developer that I know that the mayor and council is proud to have. Sounds like a very nice development for your community. So we're working with the developer to let them know what the connection fee would be. We apply every credit that we can. We've mentioned in our pre-meeting, there's credits for things as age restrictions on property, prior use on properties. You mentioned a one-bedroom, a home with an addition. Most of the reviews that we do resulted in what we refer to as a review no fee. So over the last, I think we looked at the last five years in your community, I think 55 to 60% of the reviews where an inspector from PBSC went to the building department, saw that there was some development taking place, resulted in no charge, no administrative fee, no actual connection or tapping fee, for lack of a better term. That's the statutory term.
And that's the simple fella house, but like in Lynnhurst, there was a restaurant that opened up, $13,000 fee.
Right.
Those can stifle development.
And Mr. Mayor, I have to plead ignorance. I'm not, I think you said that was a number of years ago. I'm with the agency for about, just about nine years. I'm not familiar with that one, but we talked about this new development in your town where it's a four-story building that's being proposed. There's some retail space. There's several dozen apartment complexes. That's not gonna be a $40,000 connection fee or anything like that. I think we're thinking along the order of $25,000. And again, the basis for that connection fee, not only is it in the statutes that I provided to you, but the New Jersey Administrative Code, which our legislature adopts. We don't say willy-dilly, oh, we're gonna just charge that guy $2,000 because he's adding a bedroom. The New Jersey Administrative Code, which is adopted by our legislature, says if you have, for lack of a better example, a laundromat that's being in place, put in place where there was no building whatsoever before, the Administrative Code anticipates that each washer in the facility is gonna throw off X number of dollars that would then be sent for treatment at PBSC, and here's what the connection fee is based on that. I don't know how other agencies charge theirs.
Other agencies have different connection fees.
Much higher than ours.
It's hard to understand.
Much, 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 much higher than ours, incidentally.
So before I open up to any quick questions, if anybody has it, I'd like to thank you for being here. Do you ever come into your member-owner municipalities and just have a conversation about what fees you're planning or what things you're thinking of next, or is that something that's...
We're always available to come back. I'll be honest with you, this is probably the first time, about three or four years that I've gone before one of our mayors and councils. I was in Bloomfield a number of years ago. We were constructing a, what we refer to as a living classroom at one of their schools. They had a couple of questions about. We are always available to speak to. Obviously, I wanna keep the lines of communication open, answer any questions that the agency, I'm sorry, that the, that the town has about other services that PBSC offers, incidentally. Our river restoration program, an award-winning program. We offer educational outreach to every one of the schools in our district, K through 12. I think Belleville already takes advantage of that program. There's no cost. But if you don't, please let us know. It's there.
Any quick questions, please, gentlemen? No? Then, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So that was the cycle. We are gonna go back up now to presentations. I'm told that we have a right on hand now for presentation number C, Presentation to the Dignitaries of the 2020 Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. For that, I will hand it over to our deputy mayor, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have some presentations for the 2020 Nutley-St. Patrick's Day Parade. And I know sometimes people question, why is Belleville giving resolutions to a Nutley parade? However, I like to point out the fact that, including this year, there's been three grand marshals in the last three years that were from Belleville, and some of the other ironies also. So by any means, this is a Belleville and Nutley parade, even though it's only Nutley. And I thank my friend Tom McHenry, who's the president of the Nutley Islands, for doing that. So thank you. Thanks, Tom. St. Patrick's Day, you're tired? All right, I'm gonna call your name, so if you guys could just come up here real quick and get your proclamation. We're gonna start with the parade queen, Erin Baker. We have the 2020 Man of the Year, Dan Kane. We have our Police Officer of the Year, Robert McDermott. Deputy Grand Marshal, Brian Blum. Belleville's own judge, our Grand Marshal, Karen Smith. Now I'd like to call Tom McHenry up here. He's gonna say a little bit about the parade.
No, you come over here. Mayor, Council, I've been a friend of yours for the last 12 years. And Deputy Mayor, Vinnie Calzigerone, big supporter of ours for over the years, which all of you have been, best groups too. These way, we do include Belleville. I'm born and raised in Belleville, still have a lot of family in Belleville, a lot of friends in Belleville. So Belleville's really my hometown, too. We do have two fine ladies representing Belleville this year. And over the past years, we combined this whole thing. PJ, the councilman who passed away, who's president of Belleville Irish, who's president of Nutley. When he passed away, Belleville Irish folded. So we got all their members to us. We got over 320 members of Nutley Irish. You wouldn't think that of Nutley. One of the largest groups in the state of New Jersey. Next week, we go down to county, then we go down to town. We have breakfast with the governor. I mean, it's a big thing for everybody. And we're so proud to have people from Belleville included in this. And the participation, the councilor and mayor in our parade is very overwhelming to us, though. I mean, it's a great thing to keep these two towns together, which I think is great. The police department and the fire department, they all work together. And we're so proud to have Belleville with us, and thank you very much for having us. And Vinnie, thank you for all you do for us. Vinnie's a lot of fans we have, and he's our big supporter.
So you have 319 Irish members in one of town.
It's always best when he came. Deputy Mayor, thank you very much.
Just gonna give involvement to clear the room for the master school and meeting. We are, for those of you who are following the agenda, we circled around a bit. We now seem to be at the executive section, two items on there, but our astute council has recommended we take item number A, include that in the public discussions. So I'm gonna add item number C and move, now I'm gonna make a statement. And move, receive your accord to discuss Belleville's COA. Can we just shut that door, maybe? So you've heard my speech already now three times. Just, for Jack, speak up. You're really addressing the mayor and council.
Yes.
We're just looking for overview of, Belleville's gonna eventually have a fully capable and qualified COA project, my belief, is that we will have a pot of money to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars at our disposal to help people who qualify, predominantly low-income, fix, remediate their house. If I'm wrong, if they stay in it for X amount of time, they may not have to pay that money back. This is a program that most municipalities have. Belleville's never really had any money in the bank for it. And this money does not come from taxpayers. This money comes from projects that happen throughout the township. Because we've already met our low-income housing... throughout the township, because we've already met our low-income housing obligation, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, a developer, somebody to build a building, has to then put X amount of dollars as a formula, we don't make it up, it's a state mandated formula, they put that into an account, and then our residents benefit from that, is all that correct?
That was a great presentation, great overview. Should I just go? Mr. Mayor, Council, Derek Orton, pleasure to be here in Lucina Webster, I'm your affordable housing council, have been for the last couple of years. There's correct, about two years ago, a year and a half ago, we got a rehab program approved by a judge in Superior Court, and through that program, we established an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and with the court approval, we were able to start collecting development fees from various projects that are coming into town, and that program, I think two years ago, had thirteen thousand dollars in it, and now we are working our way up to several hundred thousand dollars.
So we got a couple of thirteen thousand?
We had thirteen thousand about two years ago, and in that time period, we've exceeded what we projected to collect, and we're now at around three hundred thousand, and we are projecting additional fees as other projects or as other developers come in for redeveloped projects or other projects in town.
And have you have that projected to last year?
I think we are probably going to be close to nine hundred thousand in the next three years.
Derek, that's just so, that's based on, that's statutory, based on our...
Yes.
The percentage that each developer...
That's correct, in the context of a residential project, it's one percent of the equalized assessed value of the project upon construction, and the context of a non-residential project, it's two and a half percent, and these percentages are set by state statute and governmental regulations, so you don't have a lot of leeway in tinkering with them. So we established a spending plan for these dollars, we're in the process of rolling out a rehab program, and the rehab program is going to make available grants to qualifying households in Belleville, minimum ten thousand dollars, this is, these monies can be used if a resident qualifies, for things like HVAC, front doors, roofs, storm doors, windows, sometimes a stove, it's a lot of great things to get households that might have code violations back up to code, get them livable, get them in a presentable shape, so it's a great program, we're very happy to have the mayor and council in support of it, and I expect that over the next couple of months, there's a couple of other administrative things that we need to do before we roll the program, but once those things are done, I expect we'll have some public sessions, Mr. Mayor, if you think that's a good idea, there'll be some advertising, we'll make residents aware of all the program, where you can get the documents, who you can talk to, and hopefully people start applying for the grants.
I think part of that, sorry, part of the money in the account actually is earmarked for that type of stuff, right?
Yes.
Administration, marketing.
It is, so that's a great point.
Yeah.
The, the, it's twenty percent of the fund is earmarked for administrative fees.
Again, this is non, this is, this fund was raised not through tax dollars.
These are not tax dollars, it's not, it's strictly development fees, the monies to pay the various professionals like myself that help to administer the fund, does not come out of municipal budget, it all originates and is dispersed from the trust fund, so it's not an added tax on residents or anything like that, it's not like the connection fees we were about.
The one thing that I'm concerned about is, government does a terrible job of educating, communicating, all that stuff, I don't want to have this pot of money and have Nutley have, know it's available, we had, once a month now, we're bringing in a department head to explain what they offer, and last month, we had our health director in here, and Belleville offers unbelievable programs, visiting nurses and so forth, most residents have absolutely no idea that those parts do, we have to market the program, advertise the program, make sure that residents know about it. Is there an interest rate they pay to pay it back?
So the way, the way we think we're going to structure the grants for rehab, is that if a tenant, well, you're really talking about, in the case of the owner, not the tenant, if it's a rental building, the tenants are not paying any money back, it's the owner who takes the grant, but in that case, if the owner does not sell the building for ten years, we're thinking that over time, the grant gets forgiven, so that every, every year, it's a percentage.
Every year gets a percentage.
It's kind of like your CD.
Because it's not income-based?
The qualifications, to get the grant.
If I own a third unit building, I'm probably not a low-income owner.
So then, tenants have to...
The tenants that are occupying the unit have to, not the owner.
That's interesting. Not the owner, correct, but in most instances, we anticipate that it's going to be
Single family.
Single family, owner-occupied structures, people on a fixed income, someone who hasn't been able to repair a roof that's been damaged for, you know, a long period of time, what was the other point I wanted to make? So the rehab is the main thrust of the program, there's a couple of other things that the council, you know, could make dollars available for, but yet, the administrative expenses, the professional fees, all comes out of the trust fund, not a new tax on the residents or from the municipal budget.
To the chair, yeah.
One last...
As you're saying, is there a formula to qualify those people as far as the economy's concerned?
Yes, yes, and it depends on the size of your household, so the income ranges, depending on how many people, you know, if you're talking about a four-person household, I'm going off the top of my head here, fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars, sometimes up to seventy thousand, depending on how many people are in the household, for a single fam, you know, for a one-person household, it can be as low as twenty to thirty, so there's a formula, and what I would recommend, Mayor, to your point about getting the public aware of it, there's administrative agents that the town will have to hire, these are professionals who know how to run these programs.
Pay for out of fees.
Pay for out of fees, there's really only about seven or eight companies in the state of New Jersey, maybe you have to tell, I'll have to double-check the list, that are qualified by the state to administer these types of programs, and they have the expertise and know-how to get the word out in town, to run these types of programs, the library.
I'm told, yeah, we're looking at that.
Derek gave us the names, so we're looking into those.
It's a niche business, so there's not a lot of people who can do it.
Well, now we finally have money.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you, pleasure to be here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Derek, thank you.
Very informative, Derek. Okay, so at this moment, unfortunately, on spectators, I'm going to entertain a motion to executive session.
I have one.
I didn't see a sign in for a public discussion.
We're going to get there, we're not there yet, you won't miss your turn.
You don't have to sign it, it's okay. Make a motion to go to a closed.
So we need a motion to go to a closed session to discuss litigation Rivera versus County of Belleville, and we are going into a session, no action will be taken, we will come out of executive session momentarily. Motion made, second, all in favor? First call it all.
Councilmember Casaroli, Grantzi Adam, Natori, Robell, Strumeloberg, Mayor Melling.
Yes. We are re-entering our public meeting, we are now on item number six, approval of minutes, and I get the motion for the combined conference review meeting of February eleventh, twenty twenty.
So moved, second.
Motion made, second, first call it all.
Councilmember Casaroli.
Yes.
Grantzi Adam.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robell.
Yes.
Strumeloberg. Mayor Melling.
Yes. Next up, we have the report of the manager, I will ask the manager to just say, please speak up, since he thought might do a better job, try to be as loud as Regina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and certainly it's great to always see so many familiar faces. My report is somewhat brief, but...
They're beating the door to get in, hold on.
Thank, for my report.
They want to hear. They're beating down the door to get in.
For my report. First, uh... It didn't work, huh? So first, let me, for those who have not had the pleasure of being, we recently hired a full-time chief financial officer, Judith Curry, Judith comes to Belleville with over twenty years of experience, she is a certified tax collector, she is a certified chief financial officer, and this June, she will be a registered purchasing officer, she brings a lot of talent to our team, I'm clearly, just in the short period of time that we've worked together, I think we're all going to notice some efficiency and effectiveness in a very short period, having a full-time CFO is essential to any good government, and certainly, this is something that I was very, very happy, Mark and I did go through an interview church, and we're very happy to welcome Judith. Last week, our police department, which has been accredited by the state for how many years, don't you?
Three.
Three years, had, just recently, had, every three years, you have to get the re-accreditation, so last week, the state was in, did a thorough review of our police operation, public safety operations, the initial findings were very high, the chief has an interview that he actually has to go down and go before board, and we're pretty confident that we are going to get another three-year accreditation, so another great job by the police department. Since our, thank you, Chief, since our last meeting, unfortunately, we had two house fires, most important when it comes to house fires, life safety is our number-one concern, and in both cases, we were very fortunate that, yes, there were damage to the homes, so all the residents were taken out very safely, and that's most important. At the last meeting, we had, I think, a small concern of the continuing problem at Marion Court, today, we replaced approximately sixty feet of sewer line, there was a major swell in it, so our engineers and contractors feel pretty confident, it was a one-day job, they did a great job, and now they start to go back and pave, but the replacement line actually is done, never done in one day, so I think that's it, I know the mayor, you're going to speak about our early morning experience, again, it was a very positive experience, it's something very positive for Belleville, but I'm going to let you speak on that one.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Manager, next, I know we have reported the mayor, so, real quick, just to summarize, I know we gave a quick, a quick presentation today, it was a great day for Belleville, I mean, when you get to honor two heroes in the same council meeting, that's impressive, and to have one of those heroes be one of our firemen, who while off-duty, flung into action and at his own risk and peril, performed a task that some people may have run the other way from, again, it's an honor, and then you saw Michael James here, we all know what he did, so it's a proud day for Belleville, it's a proud day to be able to honor these people, as I go forward in the rest of some of my items here, I did, you might like this, Judith, I have the audit findings from two thousand and eighteen, I have read them.
I've read them already.
There are eighteen pages of the findings, I go to the findings part, the one thing that I will say is that I have to sign this and certify that I've read it, I did come across some items, and now I can address you rather than Mr. Iacono, that were repeat items from the previous years, so I feel that I'm going to be all over that, so I don't think I need to go any further, but...
He was the person that wants to work on.
Yes, okay, so I will be signing that, that I've read it, and I just want to make sure that we have someone duly capable, which I know we have, someone now, so we haven't had a CFO for many, many years, a budgeted item, I don't want to read that it's a new position, it's going to be created, we are a seventy-two billion-dollar corporation that has not had a CFO for many, many years, as a matter of fact, the last CFO we had was terminated abruptly, another lawsuit that we settled, and we're just, no, this is going to end a lot differently, because it's a different administration, different government body, and we had you here, so I appreciate you being here, I did read my homework, just so you know, manager mentioned police re-accreditation, something that we're very proud of, a while ago, there were not many member or police departments that are accredited now, it's becoming more common, again, it just goes and stands up what a great police force we have, and what a great job that they do, speaking of which, I was with Mr. Iacono at about four forty-five this morning, and we took part in something that I just, I can't say enough about it, it was, we had been, myself and the manager have been aware of this from our chief for some time, in generalities, even we were right into all the details of what was about to happen, or when it was going to happen, until very last minute, and last week, we had a target date, myself and the manager attended a briefing yesterday in Belleville, this whole thing that you've read about, whether you saw my social media or about it, was really nine different concurrent raids that happened simultaneously at the crack of dawn this morning, and we were on scene today at Stephen Crane Village, where three different target doors were hit, it was five forty-five AM, and the helicopter was above us, and it was, it was quite interesting, you know, you have, I always obviously have a strong respect and admiration for our police in general, especially our police, but when you see those guys and girls get armored up, and kick down a door, and run through a dark house with their guns out, knowing that there are guns on the other side of that door, it's a scary thing, it's something that makes you really appreciate a police officer, the raids were a huge hit, I understand something, I don't know if what you've seen on the news or what you've read, but these were not low-level, somebody selling marijuana on the corner, these were murderers, Anthony and I yesterday saw a deceased individual whose head was blown off as he laid there on the sidewalk for a hundred and fifty-dollar drug debt that he owed, and one of the people that we saw captured this morning was that gentleman, and it was just interesting, but it was, again, a new, as if I can't have more respect for police, but it was something that I was very proud of, and Belleville, just so you know, Belleville, it happened in NORC, all the targets were NORC, Stephen Crane Village basically shares a fence with Belleville, Belleville Police, we do have at least one officer, I won't say his name, that is tasked to some federal task force, so Belleville is involved in that, in the planning, the strategic part of that, our Belleville detectives, our Belleville CERT team, or I'm sorry, our Belleville SWAT team, our Belleville officers, detectives, were involved in these raids, Belleville was in fact a participant in the planning and the execution of this, and as much as Anthony and I were on scene for three doors this morning in Stephen Crane Village, we went with the, it was quite funny, actually, it was, we wound up going on a, on a off-the-books-record adventure, and we realized that there was, no, we, we were told that there was another person that may be in another house that happened to be in Belleville, so without much warning, we ended up in a procession with forty or fifty armed men and women with guns, and we were on scene in Belleville at an apartment house, and Anthony and I and one Belleville police officer were the first team through the door, it wasn't supposed to work that way.
It wasn't supposed to be that way.
But it did, and thankfully, though, it all worked out, and, and again, I can't have enough to say about the job that these men and women do, at all levels of government, including obviously our Belleville Police Department, so, Chief, thank you again for your leadership and your commitment to that, Belleville will be safer, Silver Lake will be safer, because these were the people that controlled Silver Lake, the head has been chopped off, the ten top people that controlled Stephen Crane Village for drugs, for violence, for crime, for all that are off the street, no bail reform here, they didn't come before a county judge or a municipal judge, they're in federal possession right now, probably ten, fifteen, twenty years of which they will serve it, federal feds only lose two percent of their cases, ninety-eight percent they win, they will be on some farm in Minnesota, Arkansas, somewhere far away from here, they will serve eighty-five percent of that time, they're away, and that's better for obviously Stephen Crane Village, and it's better for NORC, because our chief will tell you, we do get a lot of overflow violence and crime from that area, so, again, it's a good day for Belleville all around, we met Judith, our CFO, a quick little water update, we had to issue a warning, a notice last week or the week before about water, that notice seems scary, again, we violated federal standards, and that's the standard stock letter we have to issue, there is a silver lining to that, our levels, as we predicted last year, that as NORC's new treatment goes through the infrastructure, levels will come down, we have consistently, this is the second go-around now, levels have come down, fifteen parts per billion, which is fifteen drops in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, that's what the federal government says is actionable, that's what the federal government says we have to notice our residents if our ninety percentile violates that, we have come down, we are at sixteen parts per billion, not good, still actionable, still reportable, but we can almost guarantee that next quarter's results will be underneath that fifteen parts per billion threshold, and Belleville's lead issues will be deemed short-term solved because of NORC's water treatment, I maintain the only way to prevent this long-term is total lead line replacement, and we are contemplating several different programs now for that, so that's good news, even though we had to notice people, this Sunday, as you heard, March first, from twelve o'clock to two o'clock is our census kickoff, it will be at the senior center, and that's really it for me, I know it's not committee reports or that time, but I know Councilman has one thing left to add.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, and that was committee reports, but as far as the musical Annie, we did get a cast, we had a lot of kids that tried out, so the show is going, go on, they first and they second, and Anthony, we're in production right now, correct?
We are about to put together the rehearsal schedule, the casting just got completed, so now we're going to production, yes.
Again, it was a very good sign that we did get the kids, and that we will be doing this production, and a lot of community involvement also will be part of this production.
To the chair, sure, real quick, I just wanted to comment, because about, I don't know, five, six years ago... I just wanted to comment because about, I don't know, five, six years ago, we had a conversation in the GIP. One of the ways to help us reduce our claims as well as our premiums was to get the police force accredited. And I want to thank Bart for doing that for us. Because I mean, that does help us.
Yes.
And I want to thank the manager, wherever he is, for Marion Court because that's been a problem for a while. Thank you.
Communication.
A request received from St. Anthony's Church for permission to conduct a feast in honor of St. Anthony on Friday, May 29th, Saturday, May 30th, and Sunday, May 31st. A procession through the streets on Sunday, May 31st, and for the vendor fees to be waived for the vendors of the feast.
Just something to be over here?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion made and second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham. The letter of resignation received from Dr. James J. Cosarelli, trustee of the Belleville Public Library Board and Information Center. See letter received from Mayor Michael Melham appointing Robert Cosarelli as a trustee of the Belleville Public Library and Information Center to fill the unexpired term of Dr. James J. Cosarelli.
Ordinance for introduction.
Ordinance number one for introduction, ordinance to amend Chapter 11 Streets and Sidewalks.
Make a motion.
Motion. Second. Motion made and second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham.
P. Ordinance for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, bond ordinance provided for the upgrade of network infrastructure at all facilities and the removal of dirt and fill, removal of soil dirt and fill dirt from workmate to mortar service jobs in and by the township of Belleville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $825,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $785,714, bonds are noted to the township to finance part of the cost.
Motion open for public hearing, second.
Motion made and second to open for public hearing. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham.
Mr. Frank Anton.
Good, Mayor, Councilwoman, it says $357,000. This is for that dirt move down public works, correct?
That's correct.
Have we learned our lesson? Are we going to?
I haven't learned the lesson. I didn't pile up the dirt down there.
Again, talking to you a year and a half, not talking to the other councilmembers who've been here for 12 years. I was yelling for you, when we're doing that water sewer, public service or all the others, they'll put the same dirt back in the hole. We were bringing it down there, and then we were buying tons of gravel, which I, well, maybe I'll over how much gravel we paid for, which was not needed. So have we learned that? We do these excavations, throw water, we use the same dirt. I mean, public service, our marsh and everything, nothing there. Go look, there's a pile of dirt. They do their job, replace the gas lines, whatever it is, same dirt goes back in. And we could avoid this $356,000. So to the chair, the manager, will you direct public works to use that same dirt to fill these excavations?
I think we've learned that with a professional full-time town manager, we're going to avoid some of those problems in the future. And he's also quickly cleaning up some of the messes that we're looking for.
Well, I hope so because we had a professional full-time manager, but it took too cheap twice, and it wasn't done. But the other thing is, you also have on the agenda to do the, something at the pistol range. Before we get rid of all this good dirt, which you said it was tested and it was perfectly good dirt, before we get it all away, then have to pay for more dirt, that's very low area over there. Could we use some of this dirt, save some of it, to fill over there before we then see another bill for dirt to fill the pistol range up?
I hope you'll take that on the advisement.
And I brought up to your previous manager twice in the council, the pistol range, sure, at the far back corner of it, against those houses.
Mr. Frank Anton, I need you to keep your comments on this particular order.
I'll bring it up.
Motion to close public.
Motion. Not yet, sir, unless you're doing that this order. I think you want public comment. Your first one, I got you.
Motion to close public and move for final adoption, second.
Motion to close public and move for final adoption.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for public hearing. Orders approving the first amendment to financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by between the township of Belleville and Silver Lake Urban Renewal LLC.
Motion move for public hearing, second.
Motion made and second to move for public, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham.
I'll hear the comments of the public, yes.
Motion to close public, move for final adoption.
We have somebody. So just so I get a feeling, I'm answering this anyway. This is just an amendment to something that was previously approved, we're just changing a name. Mr. Frank Anton.
Yeah, what is the amendment? What is the actual amendment?
It's, we removed, was it?
Pinnacle.
We removed pinnacle. The owner of the property is now the developer.
And?
That's it. We just changed names.
Removal of the name?
That's all we're doing.
The new owner now?
Same owner. The owner is now the developer, Black Oak. The original owner.
Black Oak is still the owner?
Yes. Motion closed.
Motion to close and move for final adoption, second.
Motion made and second to close and move for final adoption.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance approved.
Motion open public.
Motion made and second to open for public comment, Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Schumelberg, Mayor Melham.
Yes, sir. Do me a favor, just state your name and address on the record.
Sure, my name is David Cummings. I'm from Montclair, New Jersey, E. Pleasant Avenue. And I come here tonight on behalf of the Montclair Native Development Corporation, which is the oldest social service agency in Montclair since 1968. And we are funded by the county. And the last year, the county has extended us to start working with Belleville and Umpire. So I'm here to basically tell you about some of the programs that we offer, but mainly to talk about three programs that we would like to begin soon with your public school system.
So sir, can I just interrupt for one second? I'm sorry. So this is public commenting, I will let you speak.
Okay.
This is a portion that residents only get about five minutes.
I'll be done.
Okay, because as I said, I can always invite you back and put you on in discussion at a later meeting.
Right, but I just want to give you information. I've already met with guidance counselors at Belleville High School. Come here to meet with you guys tonight to let you know. Well, we have two workforce development programs. One for 15 to 18-year-olds, get them interested in entrepreneur programs. The others are 18 to 24-year-olds. Some of these students are overage, undercredited, which means they're not going to college, they're not going to armed services. We're here to help them. The beauty of our program that we're also talking about is our suspension program, which the guidance officers at the high school showed a lot of interest in. This is a program where we hope to come into Belleville and give these students the opportunity to get services by our counselors, our teachers, full wraparound services that we provide them. The beauty of that also is we have two bilingual ESL managers, so we're here for that population as well. And the information I'm going to give you here is one that you can take to get more information about that. But essentially, what we're trying to do is bring what we're doing in Montclair, which is a partnership with the township as well as the school system, to help that population. These are the most vulnerable. As a young man, I was talking about before about your COA problem. We also provide rental and utility assistance to individuals who may be looking at a situation where they may be kicked out of their apartments or their housing. We also provide home insurance programs where we provide residents' ability to be first-time homeowners. So we're basically here if you haven't been here before. And I think it's very important that the council know that you have a viable option to help your residents with those who fit the federal poverty guidelines. So that's where we are. Can I hand each of these ones?
Sure, for sure.
Okay.
We could always, we could look through it, and then we might have you back. Like you saw, we had discussions.
Yeah, so I met with the free old informers to kind of start that conversation. It's very important that we, you know, do what we need to do for the county as well as for Belleville.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Frank Anton. I hear a lot of talk about beautifying Washington Avenue. Okay, on Washington Avenue, this parking lot going south on the west side between Belleville Avenue and William Street, you have to something about it. I've been asked many times. There's no lighting there. It's pothole color. It is atrocious. I mean, it's town-owned, and I think we should do something to fix it. Somebody's going to get hurt walking in there or mugged or worse. So, you know, worry about crime with that being so dark over there, parking your car. I've been there at night at times, and I would even park there, I'll pull right out. So I hope that you do something to try to beautify that parking lot. So we'll look into that. And I just would like to thank Marie for coming to the seniors' Valentine party and giving them the chocolate. They really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
The Mafucci's 61 Continental Avenue, the landlord board. It's supposed to be nine members, three single-family homeowners, three landlords, three tenants. We're down to six people. We have the single-family homeowners. We have two tenants and one landlord. So we have three vacancies. We'd appreciate it if you could appoint people. First two meetings, we hope to have five people.
But you said one tenant? You said one tenant?
Two tenants. No, two tenants.
And two landlords? Can you have the secretary of the board just send us a letter or memo? So we know that, you know, we have it.
Stop to the.
The board's got a secretary. Just have her send us a letter or memo on that, and we'll take action.
Gary Hinton, 307 Fairway Avenue. I see you've got the fence put up along the Fairway Park and the Bridgebook Apartments. And you put the same kind of fence that was up before, kept getting damaged by the snowplows and stuff. And are they putting a guard rail in there? I keep asking about that, and we keep getting the same problem with it.
I'll refer to the manager.
And certainly see, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a negotiation to come up with a mechanism to pay for the fence. And our share was $10,000, and the share was 15, but never at any time was there any allowance for any guardrails. Yes, in hindsight, the guardrail would make, you know, could prevent a snowplow from running into fence. But I don't think there was funding for it. So right now, there is no plans for a guardrail.
The township, the township, they put up the fence.
They put up the fence, they put up $10,000. But there was no other money available for God's.
The township, they put up the fence.
Here we have a problem that's been going on year after year for as long as I can remember. And I keep bringing it up about that fence and snowplows, plows can hit it down. Now, of course, the taxpayers, the dollars, $10,000. The cost of all the people in Bridgebook Apartments, the other $15,000, it's like $25,000 for that fence. So all the homeowners in the apartments had to pay the $15,000, split that up to the rest of the taxpayers and down, pay $10,000 for a fence that shouldn't have been paid for from the insurance from the snowplow guys. And it gets damaged every year, every year. Keep asking for that guard rail to alleviate the problem. I went as far as to donate the fence. I had a six-inch pole, instead of the skinny two-inch poles that they use. I was giving you a six-inch aluminum pole with the fence, and you go the whole strip for free without, you didn't have to pay a dime for it. It was turned down, and now the taxpayers got to pay $10,000 out of that fence. I don't think it's fair for the town taxpayers. The guard rail would be a big improvement for the problem, but it just keeps going over and over. Now, the same thing's going to happen with you. You've got the same fence that was up there before. The plows are going to plow, the snow into the fence, and it's going to bend it. They're going to bend it back and keep going each year, bend it back, bend it back. We're going to wind up with the same problem time after time. And nothing is done about this situation. I think it's a shame. I'm just asking you as the mayor now, you're doing a lot of things involved here for the people. I want you to consider that, somehow getting that guard rail.
Many, many conversations were more of too cheap. We've had, I've had conversations with Mr. Iacono. The guard rail, we can't mandate they put a guard rail on private property. It's private property. Two guard rails, two or three feet in the air, when you plow snow, it snows on the ground. So that wouldn't alleviate the problem. What I said is if it is Belleville's fence and they do damage it, we will hold them accountable insurance-wise. But that's really all unfortunately we could do. And the more we ding them on their insurance, the more they're going to get smarter and plow a different way.
If it gets knocked down again, put something that better. You know, it's ridiculous to keep going through it. It's the training of them guys have no place to put the snow what they're.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Frank Anton?
Yeah, rare opportunity. I want to thank Mr. Iacono for the Marion Street Court that's over 15 years. I ain't complaining about it. But just, you also have to check the sewer traps at the mall. There's a grease that's coming out of there. We've talked about that for years. So before we have another problem, I think you follow up and see what's coming out of that mall out there, all right? This, I'm very glad we spoke about the problem that Stephen Crane, the mayor, it sure was a nasty encounter we've had there. But let me tell you, it's ironic that I prepared to speak of this today. That was caused by politicians, okay? One of the things about living for a decade, you get a little experience of history and math, all right? These high-density apartments are what's caused all this profit and all. And we can go back and look, the Stephen Crane Village was built in the 1940s. In the 1950s, as a young man, my father's business partner lived in Stephen Crane Village. A few times, we'd go over there for parties. It was beautiful. They had a basketball court in the back, where kids playing out there, it was beautiful. But eventually, all these high-rises come down to that. The Colonnade Apartments in Newark, built in 1960.
That's a high-rise.
With its 22-story high-rise, luxury apartment. My father come home one day, said, oh my God, they built these things. Going to be luxury apartments overseeing the skyline of New York. And down in front of them, right in front of Broad Street, was going to be a luxury mall, a high-end mall. Well, 60 years later, what happened? And what is it? It's still an empty lot grown weeds and next to a Burger King, all right? The Columbus Homes. My wife's aunt moved in there. Again, luxury apartments in North Newark here, beautiful. We went there a couple of times. Where are they? They were demolished. They became slugs, drug havens, and criminals, all right? The Archibis Walts Apartments. My first girlfriend lived there. Beautiful apartments, beautiful luxury apartments. The, what happened? They didn't last 40 years, okay? There were high-density ones. In the beginning, they had a nice patio place, like your professor from Washington Avenue here, 172, where the public users sit in front, there was little gardens, there was trash there, right? Where are they? They're demolished, right? The, in Balesburg, the Mont Avenue Apartments, all these garden apartments, right here in Belleville. When I moved there 53 years ago, the beautiful apartments, the branch with gardens on Belleville Avenue here. There were a couple of doctors, a couple of friends of mine lived there. When I went in business in 1972, I did a couple of jobs in that place. They were nice apartments. What did they turn into? I mean, Councilwoman Burke knows, all right? When she took office, and the police chief knows, there were drug havens in there, all right? In fact, one of the late councilpeople gave me a stack of police reports, three inches thick, which he wasn't supposed to do. I gave it back. thick, which he wasn't supposed to do, I gave it back to the chief there, but it detailed all the bad stuff in there. So what you do, all these politicians at the time, you know, Mayor Malani in Newark, Mayor Anderson, all, we're building these, these are luxury apartments, almost identical words that you have spoken, Mr. Mayor, these luxury apartments and these high-class things, they're gonna bring dining to Belleville, and they're gonna bring people to dress up the earth. All of these things historically have turned into slums, and you get crime and all that. Then, there's also, I mean, some of the comments on people, you just Google the Colonnades apartment, the hallways, the elevators are dirty, bedbugs, please move out as soon as you could, the hallway looks like a crack house and smelled like weed, three pages just of first.
I appreciate the history of Newark high-rise and low-income housing, but I do need you to wrap up.
And Belleville, and the stuff, the high-rise in Belleville, and what you're creating all these. The latest, 78 to Washington Avenue, remember the guy gave him the plans there and all that, you don't have one square foot of permeable area, all right?
Mr. Franatoni, I do need you to wrap up.
All right, well, finally, but then there's articles, the way, here, if you read the trade magazines and all that, how we built our way into an urban flooding epidemic, and the main reason, overdevelopment. The big development project did not leave the permeable area, and we're talking about flooding, a lot of it is not climate change, it's overdevelopment, you keep paving over every square inch, and that's what you're doing in this town, it's got to stop. And 630 Washington Avenue, what though is that? You have it on the agenda here?
630.
630 to 32 Washington Avenue, another area here, you're asking the planning board to?
Across from the motorcycle mall.
It's the motorcycle mall, no, on this side.
I do need you to wrap up, you're way over your time, thank you.
Is it that new, that brick building down there?
No.
It's down below.
630 to 632, if you Google it and look at the, I know that, that used to be Steve, Mr. Groome, the lawyer, that's that brick building, that's the answer, 630 to 632. So what are we doing? We expanding the motorcycle mall development from 135 units? Well, do any of you know what you're voting on tonight?
Yes.
I'm telling you, 630 to 32, when I bought a building in Belleville, Mr. Groome, we had to close him there, he was the lawyer for the attorney, that's that brick building, that was not included in the motorcycle mall, 135 units, that was supposed to be renovated to continue to be used as office buildings. So somebody give me an answer, do you know who you're voting on tonight?
Yes.
And what is it?
The residency property across the street from Motorcycle Mall.
Across from it? It's not the mall.
We're gonna look it up, but I'll, we'll get you that answer.
I'm telling you exactly what it is.
We'll get you your answer, you're way over your time.
Well, you're gonna vote on it tonight, how do you vote on it?
I just said, we're looking it up.
You don't have an answer.
I just said, we're looking it up.
It's a resolution. It's simple, Google on Zillow, you see the picture.
We're doing it now, Mr. Franatoni.
630 to 32 Washington Avenue.
Anybody else?
And if it is, I'm asking you not to vote on it, it's another area, we need more tax rebates that we, the taxpayers have to take. It's not ordinance.
It's a resolution.
It's an investigation, we're asking them to investigate.
That's all we're doing. Anybody else? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th, Fledgely, a bunch of quick questions, are we any closer to the rollout, the public deployment of my compass?
Adam Burke?
No.
No.
No, no time in the foreseeable future.
I don't believe they said.
All right.
At the January 28th council meeting, Mr. Iacono gave a very nice PowerPoint presentation on the extent of township services, mostly from the last year, you indicated that it would be posted on the township website, I can't find it, so would you please make that available as soon as possible? Thank you, thank you, I'm not this best, but it's not there. Quality of life issues are of paramount importance to all of us here in Belleville, since we've had a very mild winter, knock on wood, a paucity of snow, can we get the street sweepers back out as soon as possible?
They don't come out in the wintertime.
But, but that's usually because of snow impediments, we don't have any.
It's not because of snow impediments.
It's gonna be 19 degrees in London.
So it's the temperature.
It's temperature dependent, I thought it was always the snow that.
The water will freeze.
The water will freeze.
Create ice.
All right, all right, all right, that makes better sense. At the last planning board meeting, the Port of Ed presented its plans to put up a maintenance garage next to school number nine. Mr. Graziano had excellent suggestions to tweak the design of it, to enter into some sort of shared services agreement, to allow the township and the Port of Ed to possibly use the building. I just want to go on record saying I share your concerns, I've already voiced my support of your ideas to Dr. Tomko and the rest of the port members, what may happen, I don't know at this point, but I just wanted you to know that you made worthwhile suggestions that I do think we should move forward in that direction. Which brings me to another planning board matter, which I started to address at the last meeting, something that causes me some concern, and I want to make sure that everyone on this council and everyone in the community is aware of this. Last year, July, you passed the revised zoning ordinances. In the same month, a new ELEC report, a new committee was filed, Belleville Victory 2022, which includes Mr. Graziano and Mr. Peña, which is being managed by Mr. Melman. Now, the reason I bring this up is that at the end of July of last year, this campaign account received almost $1,000 worth of contributions from a gentleman by the name of Mr. Pacillo. Now, who's Mr. Pacillo? Mr. Pacillo is the owner developer for the Franklin Avenue project next to Hilton Street, which appeared before the planning board three months later, and was approved by the planning board to add another floor and to put in a mixed use, both commercial and residential. Now, it's my opinion, and I guess eventually authorities will have to weigh in on this matter, that this was, at the very least, quid pro quo. I don't know if Mr. Graziano was aware of the contribution from Mr. Pacillo, I'm going to assume he wasn't, but Mr. Graziano did vote on this matter, he voted to approve it. Your representative on the council, Mr. Zangari, was participating in the meeting, he also voted. My opinion, there was a blatant conflict of interest here, had, and you also very coyly didn't notify the public about the campaign contribution until you submitted the first finance report in January, so no one in the public knew that Mr. Pacillo had given you almost $1,000 in campaign contributions in July, three months later, this case appears before the planning board and gets approved. You're gonna have to explain this and a number of other things at some point to the appropriate authorities, but I want everyone in this council to be aware of this, so that if the stuff ever hits the fan, none of you can say, "I had no idea, I didn't know that this stuff was going on." Money's flowing into you from developers, and you largely control the planning board right now, this is something that all of you need to be aware of and stop. The last thing I want to mention tonight, unfortunately, we lost Kevin Kennedy a couple weeks ago, and I was hoping for a change of pace, that you would do the decent, humane thing, and have a moment of silence for Mr. Kennedy at the start of the meeting. You never failed to disappoint, you completely ignored it, but it really shouldn't come as a surprise, because we lost Mayor Kimball last year, you also didn't have a moment of silence. You won the election, why can't you take the high road for change, and at least recognize the contributions that Mayor Kimball and Councilman Kennedy made to this community? They were both lifelong servants, they did tremendous things that at this point made your political career pale in comparison.
Thank you, you are out of time, Mr. Sheldon.
At the next meeting, would you please try, for a change, a pleasant change, do something to properly recognize and honor both Mayor Kimball and Councilman Kennedy?
Thank you.
Unless you won't.
Jerry Lurshill, 8th Street. I have a number of questions on resolutions. Resolution number four, what is this deferring a local school tax?
Something we do every, Mr. Iacono probably speak to it, or perhaps CFL potential, something we do every year though.
We do that every year because the school calendar is different from our calendar. They actually start in July, end in June, and then we start at seven, so we'll have to define what we're doing.
You have to be like, bring it over, let me just pay it eventually.
Yes.
It's common during.
Okay, number five, I assume this is a typo? That it's 220, not 219?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Also, resolution number eight, what is resolution number eight?
Do you have? Well, we have a CFO here that can answer all these questions.
It's actually very good news, we didn't spend all those budget appropriations, so we're able to cancel them.
Well, so you have a surplus in there?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not canceling, you're using it somewhere else.
Well, what actually happened was that when we did a set of budgets, we had actually revenues and we had budget expenditures, and our revenue is going to become in 2020, so we were able to cancel, at least in those revenues for 2020.
Oh, okay. Now, the last thing that I mentioned or questioned is resolution number six that Mr. Franatoni mentioned, and you said it's the project across from the motorcycle mall. Am I not correct that this was already approved by the planning board for a project, and that's why they were cleaning it all up?
Almost positive it was approved.
It was approved.
That happens a lot though, like Washington Avenue over here, was it a project that changed?
It's changed. But if I remember correctly, when this was approved, the gentleman was not going to ask for a pilot, and this usually is to ask for a pilot. Am I correct?
It's the first part of a study that determines whether or not they would warrant a pilot.
But originally, he didn't want a pilot. Did things change?
I can't think of what his mindset was, but it's years ago, I don't know. Twenty years ago.
No, this was recent.
Talking Jacobs originally.
That was renewed, renewed, and renewed.
Oh, all right, thank you.
And it is two lots that we're studying, two lots, one of them is the building, the other one is the lot, that answers the question from before.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
Motion closed public.
Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, we have a motion to close public comment, to Clark Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Motion for consent, any deletions, we want to just change that one to fly, that resolution title?
Make it 2020. Make it 2020.
I'll change it to 2020.
Copy paste.
Motion to move the consent agenda.
Number six.
Take the one off.
Six, we're pulling off number six. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and second to move the consent agenda. With number six being omitted.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Uh, no.
Mayor Melman?
That was except the gentleman.
Yes, fine, whatever. Okay, now we're gonna move number six.
Motion move number six.
Pulled that one off individually, so we have a motion made second. Clark Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Anyway, discussions? Did you pull it off? Clark Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Epstein.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Epstein is a no vote candidate?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We have new business. Do you have new business? No, I have new business, anyway.
Is this all new business? All these? That we just got, no?